And do you have anything this evening?
I do not.
I don't have anything this evening. So we're into new business. The first is a consideration for work authorization between Integrated Science and Engineering and City of Newnan for professional engineering services for sidewalk improvements along Sprayberry Road. Mr. Clark, you have this this evening. It's fairly straightforward. Are there any questions from anyone on council, Mr. Clark?
I have one question.
Sure.
You know, we had some concerns along that. Is this Sprayberry Road or is this?
Sprayberry Road.
Yes, sir. We've separated Sprayberry Road from the Jackson Street funding-wise. So this is Sprayberry Road alone.
I understand.
Yes, sir.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion? So move. Motion second.
Second.
Authorized as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion carried. Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody, you're up with internal requests for funding under the ARPA. How are you, sir?
I'm doing fantastic. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for seeing me again tonight. We've got a quite lengthy list for the internal applications. But as you can see, the first application is from the Planning and Zoning Department partnering with NURA and the Housing Authority. This application is for affordable housing. NURA will construct seven affordable homes along Murray Street. The planning department will handle the administration of the grant funds and the Housing Authority will manage the project as its own, collecting rent and managing the properties. Project income will be used to construct more affordable homes on other city-owned lots as well.
Okay. Questions?
I have a quick question for you.
Yeah.
The planning department being involved with the primary handling of the administration reporting of the grants, is that in their wheelhouse? Is that... Are they best suited to do that?
Excuse me, yes, Councilman Carrico. As you may recall, our planning department routinely manages our CDBG projects as well as the CHIP, the housing project, so as well as our neighborhood stabilization program. So yes, I believe they have the talent within the department to manage it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, is there any limits as to when this will begin and when it will end? Or is it just forever?
For the project specifically?
Yes.
Sandra, do you want to attest to the timeline on the project?
It is a revolving.
Ms. Stroger, I'm sorry. If you'll cut it. And introduce yourself for the record, please. Thank you, ma'am.
I am sorry, I did not come here to speak. My name is Sandra Stroger. I'm the president and CEO of the Housing Authority of Newnan. Thank you. It will be a revolving fund, similar to the NSP funds that we're using right now. The funds will build the homes, sell the homes, and then we will look to buy or build additional homes in the community.
So the length of time to start the first one and complete it would be what was just...
I believe...
I know it's hard to do with today's construction.
Yeah. I think it was put two years, I believe she had put in there the initial construction.
Initial.
Initial.
I think it's important that we make one clarification. Obviously, this is a program of NURA. Obviously, Mr. Stroger has acted as a staff liaison. And you will see in the application, though, that we are using their expertise when it comes to the admin and the management. Even though it is a construction program that's managed by NURA, the title will be in NURA's name. It's just they have that expertise when it comes to managing, you know, identifying the tenants, collecting the rents, managing the properties, et cetera, so.
Okay.
Just for clarification, these are for the Housing Authority to own and rent?
No, sir. They would be owned by the Newnan Urban Redevelopment Agency.
And then rented from NURA?
For a time.
Rent you all rent.
Rent you all for a time.
Okay. Because I'm just looking at the cost of affordable housing and saying each home $250,000.
That's correct.
Okay.
And NURA stands for what?
Newnan Urban Redevelopment Agency.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Is there a motion on this one?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. We approve the first request. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign.
The second application is through the Public Works Department. This is for a culvert rehab and rehabilitation program. Mr. Ray has identified potential seven culverts that can be serviced by this. That will be the Noonan Crossing Culvert, the one at Savannah and Penson, East Broad at the substation, Dixon Street below Willow Drive, Sprayberry Road near McBride Street, 38 the Boulevard and Avery Park below Old Atlanta Highway and near Fairhaven.
Any questions on this?
I got a question. Mr. Phillips, we talked about the one culvert that I've been asking about. Is this the one that?
The original... Councilman Alexander is referring to the culvert that is found at the intersection of Penson and Savannah Street. You may recall when we were actually... We made actual CDBG application for that community, and that was going to be one of the infrastructure projects identified. But unfortunately, we were denied that particular application.
Right.
When Mr. Norton put together this initial list of culverts, it did not include that particular culvert.
Right.
And Mr. Norton's request was for $6.1 million. It would be my recommendation, if you want to add that particular culvert, which would be the seventh one, I would recommend that you raise that price by an additional $750,000 so that we have the funds available to cover that particular culvert.
I'd like to do that amendment, Mayor, if we could.
Is that a motion or something you'd just like to do?
That's a motion to make the amendment for number seven culvert.
We have a motion, the second, to include an additional $750,000 in the $6.1 million request for culvert repairs and replacement.
I have a question. Is that one one of those that we just overlooked because we?
That particular culvert has a different set of circumstances. The culverts that Mr. Norton had originally put were metal culverts that were having corrosion issues in the base. This particular culvert has a different set of issues. It is actually a concrete culvert, so structurally it's fine, but unfortunately, it is undersized and it's creating flooding and drainage issues. And number two, if you've walked along and you're driven slowly, you will see that it doesn't have much of a handrail, much of a safety, pedestrian safety features. We've actually had, you know, instances where people have ended up in the creek. So it's... Mr. Norton initially was looking at the metal culverts, and it was just my bad with communication with Mr. Norton. I thought it was going to be included, and when we got into the details, it wasn't. But again, just if we increase the budget by that amount, we can handle it. And I just do want to bring to your attention, you'll see if everything here tonight is awarded with the addition of the budget increase for this particular culvert, we would still have remaining, Mr. Moody, approximately $1.5 million in the local government, $10 million allocation.
Roughly. If we added the additional funding to this Public Works project, we would take it down to roughly $1.5 to $1.7 million.
And that's for the first tranche, right?
That's for the total award. That will be all monies, yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion, and I think I have a second. Okay.
Sorry, we have one question.
Sure.
Does that include everything that's in the pipeline at this point?
Internally, it includes everything in the pipeline with the exception of an idea that I have developed the last week or two, and have not formally finished the details, and it has not been presented to this particular body. But that would be a program. Obviously, we were denied FEMA requests for private property debris removal. We are trying to develop details on allocating money from that remaining $1.5 million that we could go individually to individual properties with some sort of limitation. Again, it's not here in front of this particular body because we're not finalized with that particular application, but it is something we're working on, and I would like to come back. And it would certainly fall within the $1.5 million allocation. Probably would recommend you don't add any more to these items tonight so that we can have a pot of money to consider that program in the future.
Well, let me be specific about the pipeline. Did you say internally, but there is?
Internally.
Okay, so there is the external that have not been added into that number that are in the pipeline.
But they don't affect the $1.5 million?
Oh, I got you. Okay. I get it. Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion, the second. Any other questions on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. The next, please, is facilities and maintenance.
Yes, this is for the second phase of the Wadsworth improvements. This will include replacing existing carpet in the building.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Facilities and maintenance, citywide upgrades.
Yes, this application is for citywide upgrades to the HVAC systems. It will introduce ionization devices and will replace bathroom fixtures with hands-free faucets as well.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on this one? Discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carried. The next.
This request from the IT Department is for replacement email archiver, and this will aid the IT Department in adhering to state retention policies for emails.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. We approve as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carried. And the last, IT.
And this will be for a backup server. This backup server will assist the IT Department in combating cyber attacks such as ransomware. This system will allow for recovery after a total destruction within less than a week.
What? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. You're still up with external applicants.
Yes, sir. All right, and the first application before you is from Habitat for Humanity. The applicant has satisfied all the necessary criteria for an affordable housing project under the ARPA regulations. The project will take place in a qualified census tract, and the applicant has noted, though, that there is a mistake on the application document, and the applicant is here to attest to the correction if need be.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion. Motion second to approve. Any discussion?
What is the correction?
It is a timeline correction. Eric, if you want to come up and speak to that.
Good evening, council members. The correction...
If you'll identify yourself for the record.
My apologies. My name's Eric Miller. I'm the president and CEO of Newnan Coweta Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you, sir.
On the timeline in front of you, which I imagine is in front of you, on Homes One and Two, I incorrectly put that those would be completed in April of 2021. Those were actually completed just a month ago in April 2022. And on line two, Homes Three and Four begin principal construction August 2022, just a few months from now, and to be completed not in February 2022, but February 2023. So those were the corrections. I'm staying.
Thank you. I do have a motion, the second. Any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next.
Okay, the second application is from the seller. The applicant has met all the necessary criteria under the small business program. The applicant has exhibited a substantial decline in grocery receipts as a result of the pandemic and operates within a qualified census tract and is therefore eligible to receive the maximum award of $75,000. And the applicant is here as well.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is resolution to appoint the 2022 MEAG power voting delegates. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Just a word, we do have an open seat this year, and there are already three people who have been getting emails. Put their name forward, so.
Yep.
Yeah, Steve Runford down in Chris County is retiring.
Mr. Mayor, if we can clarify, the actual resolution was written with a blank?
I'm sorry?
So the resolution actually has a blank. It does not state the name of the voting delegates.
Well, you know, we...
Yeah, I know in the past it's been Councilmember Alexander. I don't want to presume.
For all these years, it's been Mr. Alexander and Mr. Shell, and I would have thought they would have objected if...
Okay, I just want to make certain before we put their names in.
All right, thank you. I... I accept. I appreciate... Well, there was never an opportunity to decline. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
For seventeen years, I've showed up waiting for George not to show up, and he always shows up.
Okay, we move on. The next is a consideration of contract award to retain a contract for demolishing structures on as-need basis. Stevenson is here this evening. This is fairly straightforward. How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm fine. How are you? As you mentioned, this is straightforward. It's a demolition contract that was opened up by council previously, and you have the numbers before you, and we are... We would like to order... Award it to Complete Demolition Services there.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. We award Complete Demolition Services contract for demolition. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next is a consideration of a design proposal agreement for Wadsworth Parking Lot Improvement Project. And I do notice that I have two people on the sign-in sheet for item H, which is what this is, a Mr. Bailey and Ms. Ireland. Yes, did you intend to speak to this issue of the parking lot at Wadsworth?
No, we were at By Smith Street, where they...
Okay.
At K, I'm sorry.
K, okay. I just wanted to clear that up. I thought this might have been an odd citizen input item, so. Ms. Mosley, how are you?
I'm doing good, Mayor and Council. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Thanks. You have this before you? Are we having questions of Ms. Mosley? Is what we're doing here and how we're doing it? Okay, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the design agreement as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, unfinished business. Consideration of resolution to abandon unimproved public right-of-way on Highland Avenue. And we do have a couple of folks who signed in that said they wanted to speak to this issue, too. Ms. Smith, how are you, sir?
I'm well. Yourself?
Good.
Just as a brief introduction, then I'll allow the signer and the petitioner to speak. This was first brought to your attention in January. Mr. Kirk Avery, who owns property north of the subject, unimproved right-of-way track, seeking a petition to abandon this right-of-way to add to his property so he in turn can have enough street furniture to build, I think, three homes, a single-family detached. In the course of doing research, we did uncover there may be an objection from the south property owner. Mr. Sears got involved. We've done some additional research to find out. At one point, Highland Avenue was abandoned in the past. Half of it went to the Free and Mason's Lodge, half of it went to the Housing Authority. There is this one 4,499 square foot track that still remains technically our right-of-way. That's where we are right now. You have two resolutions Mr. Sears has prepared. Mr. Sears is also informed both property owners of the potential action council may initiate this evening. One resolution seeks to divide this right-of-way and deed over half to one property owner and half to another property owner. Second resolution is to simply give all the 4,499 square feet to one property owner. And I'll conclude my remarks and allow the petitioner to come forward or anyone else you may wish to question.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions to Mr. Smith before he walks? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And Mr. and Ms. Woodruff? If you'll... I know I called your name, but if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is David Woodruff. I'm here on behalf of Coweta 60 at 56 Sewell Road. If I may, I'd like to make a request for my wife due to speaking of a medical condition here that's rather embarrassing to be in front of a crowd of people, so if everyone's okay with it, I would ask that she could...
No problem. If you'll just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Crystal Woodruff, and as my husband stated, I'm speaking on behalf of him and the Coweta Lodge 60. It was brought up. The gentleman in question did reach out to the lodge members, and the lodge members are opposed to having that type of development right there at that property. We have to understand we're talking about a lodge that has stood there with the surrounding property for decade after decade after decade. There is some confusion on because of the fact that over the years, parcels of land that were abandoned were absorbed into the lodge's property line, and the members of the lodge have always taken care of it. So there's confusion right now with the lodge members as to where their property line actually is. Because again, I will state, you guys know where Coweta Lodge 60 is. It's an icon that's sat there. Everybody knows where Coweta Lodge 60 is. But as the years have gone by, the actual property lines have been blurred. So we were requesting that you show us a plat on what you think the property line is and then allow us to have... Allow Coweta Lodge to have the property surveyed, to, you know, put this on hold and let's let the lodge have the property surveyed because you're talking about property that the members of the Coweta Lodge, generation, generation, decade after decade after decade, has taken care of the parcels of land. So we would ask for a stay first so that we can have the time to get the actual entire property as it is surveyed. I do have a surveyor on hand that we could get out there very quickly, and then let's revisit this issue after the property lines have been clearly defined because they are no longer the same as the plat that is in the lodge that's been there since the 60s.
Ms. Woodruff, I certainly don't have a problem with continuing the issue until we have a clear definition of where the property line is, but what you have mentioned here tonight is the lodge having that done, surveyors aren't free, so I'm not sure that the lodge agrees with having to pay for that survey. So I think we have...
The lodge does agree to pay for the survey because I am sponsoring that.
Okay, we have a Mr. Avery here this evening, don't we? And you're an associate... Are you associated with the lodge?
I'm not.
You're not?
I'm in the works as a work site.
Okay. All right. Well, as long as you've lined up who's going to pay for the survey, then that's not an issue, then that's fine. Council comments?
So is my understanding that the lodge is potentially interested in acquiring this property as well?
We, as the lodge, we don't want anything built next to the lodge. It's been that way, and I opposed it with Mr. Smith. I sent an email and said, we're not interested in this whatsoever. And the way this is written, we don't get a choice in this. It's either we're going to agree to it or the city's just going to take the right-of-way and give it to Mr. Avery anyway. So I mean, that's how we're left feeling about this.
So ultimately, if the city were to abandon this property, the lodge would potentially be interested in acquiring this so that nothing would be built on it?
Yes.
Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Yeah, if that's not...
Mr. Sears?
Yeah, let me just real quick.
Hold on.
You've got in your folder all of things, and the right-of-way has been surveyed. So if they want to get a surveyor, Gaskins has surveyed it. It's in your thing where it's surveyed, half to go to the lodge and half to go to Mr. Avery for those lots, so.
Well, they've surveyed the right-of-way, but I don't see a survey in here of the actual lodge itself, and that's where the...
Well, the survey...
And on top of that, there's a difference between a survey on a piece of paper and marking the property lines on the dirt.
Yes, sir.
And that's what has not happened. Is that what you're saying? Sears, if you... Has they actually marked the property line on the...
No.
Okay, so that's what's going to happen. In order for you to know where that is.
I don't know if Gaskins did that.
That's right.
But the survey of the lodge property, there is a survey of the lodge property that was done when actually the City of Newnan owned it. Because the City of Newnan owned that track and actually sold it, abandoned the track and sold it to the lodge when the lodge was constructed. At the same time, in 1965, and you've got a copy of the resolution there, the back part of that roadway was abandoned in that resolution, half to go to the Housing Authority when those homes were built there, and the other half to go to the lodge. Now, I don't know why the other piece that ran back up to the Boulevard was not abandoned at the same time. I can only think that the person that owned the three lots that Mr. Avery has now just didn't participate, so the city never abandoned that part. And so Gaskins has done a survey. Now, I'd have to defer to Mr. Avery if he actually went out and marked the points. It appears that he found some pins if you look at what's on the survey, but that's the way it is now. You know, to the extent that's the question, you know, the property can be built on as it is with three small houses because there are three lots of records.
Without the abandonment.
Without the abandonment. What the abandonment will do will allow for larger lots and therefore larger houses to be put on it, is the way I understand why the request is. Now, Mr. Avery had requested all of it. We told him that under the law, it had to be offered to both adjoining property owners, and that's why you've got two resolutions, you know, in this. So it's up to council to determine whether to abandon it, period. But to the extent that, as the 1965 resolution states, and the resolution I've done, is the city has no intention to improve the roadway. So that's then the definition of an abandonment.
So a couple of yes or no questions. The city has already abandoned most of it, and this is only one portion of it that we have not abandoned. And then the second question is, if the lodge turns down their half of it, the city is able to give that to the other... To the applicant?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask, on these plats, there's nowhere that we understand in the lodge where this abandoned roadbed is. Could that be explained to me so I can report it back to the lodge?
It can...
I'll be happy to meet with you.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, it was included in the letter, as we said.
It may have been included in the letter, but it was not marked properly as a survey would be done with stakes and markings on the ground.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking that this have a stay until the survey can be done for a new survey with this land that has, you know, been partially absorbed over the decades so that the lodge has a very clear understanding where their property line is anyway. And then after that is done, the members of the lodge will have a better understanding of where the abandoned road is. I'm just simply asking for a stay so we could get us a proper survey done.
Right, I understand. So I'm asking for a motion to continue this item, not-
Second.
Not to a date certain, but until the issue is resolved with, that includes the knowledge that we need to make a decision. It may not be at our June meeting, it may be in the July meeting. We only have one meeting in June, one meeting in July. So just whenever they get to the point where they've got the information where we can make a decision, it'll come back on our agenda. We don't know what that date is. So is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And a second.
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, the next item for, is a 178 La Graine Street, the owner update and a request for extension. Mr. Murray, how are you, sir?
Doing well, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Yeah, this is an update, just as a reminder, 178 La Graine Street was before you in April as a continuance of a public hearing. And at that point, they were granted a 45-day extension. The property was under contract at that time, and, but there were some probate issues that have been resolved since our last meeting in April. And there is a closing set for Thursday, the 26th, at 11:00 a.m. for a new owner to take over this property. He is wanting a 45-day extension. Name is Mr. Wes Hauser. He has a number of properties here in, well, in the county and all over the state, in other parts of the country. But he's requesting a 45-day extension. He said he can clear the lot and demo the house. He does want to rebuild, but as I told him, if he demos the property within 45 days, he'll be with, you know, compliant with the resolution and with the code. So that's what he's asking.
Okay, so is Mr. Hauser in attendance this evening?
He is out of state. He's not in.
Couple of questions, and counsel might have some too. I know he's told you that he wants to demo the property, but how do we know that he will do that in 45 days? Do we have any-
Other than his word, we don't. I mean, if he doesn't, then we would move forward with a resolution.
Okay, then I would like to shorten that 45 days to 15 days because I don't want our citizens to have to look at this for another 45 days. Or 30 days, or whatever we think is appropriate. But, I mean, he hasn't actually closed on the property yet.
It's, it's, yes, there's a, that's true. There is a closing date set for Thursday, 11.
So what happens if he doesn't close on the property on Thursday?
If you're talking about from the day he closes?
No, I'm talking about-
Yeah, the resolution deadline was actually the 30th of May.
30th of May.
Of May. And he's requesting an additional 45 days to give him time to demolish, to demolish the house.
If he closes.
Right.
So halfway through July?
Correct.
And again, so if he doesn't close, the resolution is up, the 30th of May?
Yes, that's correct. And that's what I've informed him.
You could condition the motion on, you know, the extension beyond May 30th to X days, whatever you would like to put in there.
Condition on it.
Provided it closes on that date.
If not, it's up to 30th.
I mean, if he closes, we give him extension. But if he doesn't close, then the 30th of May, it's over.
Correct.
Then it'd be up to the building department to schedule whatever goes on.
We had a, we've hired somebody now to start tearing houses down so we can do it.
So I'd like to see us give him 30 days instead of 45. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second.
Question.
Okay, have a motion, second question.
30 days from May 26.
Or May 30.
From-
May 30.
May 30 was the end of the, this extension.
That's my motion.
Okay, so my question is, do we have any reason to believe that the supply chain issues, workers, all that other stuff that have been scarring other folks, is going to allow for him to finish this?
Well, he was confident that he could have that done in 45 days. He could have the house.
Right, but the resolution that we're talking about is for 30.
He's saying he wants to demolish it.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that-
Does he actually have the ability to follow through?
Does he have the ability to follow through?
Based on logistics, yeah.
Well, we don't know, but come June 30th, if it's not down, we're going to take it down.
But then we'll lean it, and then we'll have them have to pay for us to do that when if-
If they don't do it, we do it, we charge it to the lot.
But that's, that's after 30 days. Because if they actually close on the 26th, then they'll get their 30 extra days after the 30th.
Yeah, they go to June 30.
Goes to June 30.
Okay.
So there's a motion, a second. Question, town here?
Let's see. 30 days after the 30th of May is the 29th.
29.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it just doesn't matter, Trevor.
All right, any other questions, comment on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign.
Next.
Thank you. All right, motion still carried, 6-1. Okay, item K then, public hearing on 5 Smith Street, resolution, repair, demolish.
Yes, sir. This property and the following, well, these next seven agenda items are the bulk of what was left of the red tag or the uninhabitable list that was, that was put together by the building department shortly after the storm. We've worked through just about all of those. I don't anticipate another large group of properties coming before you. There are going to be a couple more that likely will come before you, but I don't anticipate a large group or number of properties coming from here on out. All of these properties are, we feel are greater than 50% of value to repair versus assessed value. The first property is 5 Smith Street. This house was damaged in the storm. It has significant roof damage. The front porch has collapsed. The house, the day I was there, was unsecured, and I was pretty much open to the elements. The lot was overgrown, but it has been cut in the last week, and I think we're asking 45 days. I believe the, I have had some communication with the grandson of the property, and he's here tonight wanting to speak as to what their plans, where things are presently and where they want to go with the property.
Okay, this is a public hearing on this issue of 5 Smith Street. I believe earlier I mentioned Mr. Bailey. This is that item, item K, and Marie Ireland. Mr. Bailey, how are you this evening?
Hey, I'm doing great. Yes, I'm Brian Bailey. My grandmother is an heir to the decedent. And right now, we're going through the probate process, just trying to advertise in a paper or so, about maybe 45, 60 days on getting that complete so we can convey the property to a buyer who wants to repair the home.
Your intention is to repair the home?
That's correct.
Have you had estimates on that?
Not complete yet.
Okay, so during that 45-day period, will you be able to do that?
Absolutely. Our plan is to convey the property to a buyer who intended to repair the home as soon as we do sell the property to them.
Okay, so this is a public hearing on this issue. Is there anyone else here who would like to come forward to speak to 5 Smith Street? Close public hearing on 5 Smith Street at this time, and ask if there are any questions from counsel?
I do, so what are you asking for? You're asking for 60 days? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, 60 days so that we can get the probate process complete once my grandmother does have the power to sell the property we convey to a buyer he's already looking to renovate the home.
So then the buyer would have to come back to us for an extension.
Right.
Do you have a buyer identified?
I have about two, and they're not here today. I'm a licensed agent here in Georgia, so I've been talking with those buyers pretty close.
Okay.
We were talking 60 days.
To give him time to resolve this state issue.
Well, that's right. That's the probate.
Right.
Yeah, sure.
What if?
Then we're, I mean, he's got that legal issue, and we're going to have to work.
I understand that, but I'm saying that if he doesn't, if he doesn't get it probated and sold, what happens in 60 days?
He comes back to us.
Okay, yeah.
So I'll make a motion for 60-day extension.
Second.
Motion, second, 60-day repair, demolish resolution on 5 Smith Street. Any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign. Thank you. Appreciate it. The next is a public hearing, and I'm open at this time on 21 Johnson Avenue. Mr. Murray?
Yes, yes, Mr. Murray. These next two properties have been approved for funding by the Cowie Community Foundation and their Long-Term Recovery Group. And Mr. Rich Dewis is here tonight to address y'all about exactly what the plans are. 66 Robinson has been funded for demolition, and it should be down hopefully this week. And then the 21 Johnson is scheduled for repairs, but I think Mr. Dewis can address that further.
How are you, sir?
Very well. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Both of these properties, 21 Johnson, do you want me to do them together?
Separately.
Okay.
We've got a public hearings on 21-
21 Johnson. The homeowner is, does have a case open with long-term recovery. He has done everything that he needs to do in our process. It's a complex situation. So where we are sitting currently is we're waiting on bids to come in for the repairs. Just to be completely transparent in our process, the city had a report put together on what needed to be done. And our, our construction manager estimation to complete that work was $115,000. That's more than, that's more than double anything that we've been able to allocate to a project in our process with the limitations that we have on funding. It is, it's everybody's desire to help this family in every way that we can. But we're in the process of waiting on that, those bids to come in. The other option that we are looking at is to offer the assistance of demolition for this family on that home, but that doesn't address their, their future housing. So that's the situation. So I don't know exactly how you all want to handle time. We need time in our, in our pipeline.
60 days?
60 days would be good. Certainly we'd have those bids back and be able to be in contact with, with Mr. Murray and see where we go.
Sure. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to the issue of 21 Johnson Avenue? If you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Ryan Smith. I'm the grandson, and I'm pretty much the owner. And I have did my bids. I just got the information this week. I had one guy come out today, and he said he should have the bid back next week. And I have one that should be here Thursday.
Okay. All right, thank you. We appreciate you being here.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time on 21 Johnson Avenue and ask the counsel for a motion.
Make a motion for, he wanted 60 days?
60 days, please.
Make a motion for 60 days.
Second.
Motion, a second. We adopt a resolution for 60 days on 21 Johnson Avenue. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. You're up on the next one, 66 Robinson. And I'm going to open a public hearing at this time on 66 Robinson Street, repair, demolish. So I understand, Mr. Murray, you said you intended to demolish?
Yes, we, we have a Cranford construction. It has been secured to do that demolition. It was supposed to have already been done. There was some miscommunication in terms of getting the utilities unhooked. I believe that is done. And so provided, he's going to check that tomorrow morning, and if everything is good, they're scheduled to start on Thursday.
30 days?
So, certainly can report back, yes.
Right, okay. Is anyone else here who would like to speak to the issue of 66 Robinson Street? This is a public hearing. See no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for a motion on the issue.
Make a motion that we, I'll give him 30 days.
Second. Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign, motion carried. Thank you. We appreciate you being here, and appreciate your hard work. Public hearing on 22 Smith Street, repair, demolish resolution.
Yes, sir. This property, severe storm damage, and the owner of this property, Mr. Zhao, I believe, here, and he's done a very good job of staying in touch with, with me as to what was going on with this property. He was having issues with settling with his insurance company, but he has resolved those issues. And over the last few weeks, he's, the house is completely transformed. He's repaired all the exterior damage, the framing. He's reframed and put on a roof. He's put all the doors and windows, repaired all the siding, and the exterior looks very good. He did want to address you about some time that he would need to finish all the trim work and the finish work on the interior. He has started that, but he did want to update you on where he stands and then some time that he was needing to finish the project.
He's here this evening?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. If you'll come forward and state your name for the record, please. Thank you.
Yes, sir. My name is Zhao Ni. You know, we were, we were here pretty hard last year. My personal home, you know, had some roof damage. I'm sorry, I got a little emotional.
Sorry, take your time.
We had four property that were affected. And insurance was a nightmare to deal with, but we finally got it done. And on this one, you know, it was difficult finding contractors. But our contractor is here tonight, and he did a good job getting the exterior finished. But our budget is kind of, you know, getting close. So I'll probably be doing some more work myself, getting the inside finished. I don't know what's appropriate to ask, either 90 days or 180 days for me to finish the inside because as you can see, you know, outside, it's pretty much finished.
Would your contractor have any input on that timeline? If you'll come forward and state your name, please.
Ken Horn, Moose Run, L.C. So the, we've got a permit, but the electrical, the mechanicals are going in right now. My electrician's a little late. He'll be doing Friday. Plumbing's done for the roof. The HVAC is done for the roof. So we got the electrical left, and then we'll get the inside insulation. So 60 to 90 days is probably where we're at because I've got to get the other contractors in-
Sure.
-for insulation and all that.
Sure. Is anyone else here who would like to speak to the issue of 22 Smith Street? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Ms. Jenkins?
Does this project, at this point where they are, even fall under our resolution?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's 50%.
Right now, they've gotten very far along.
Past 50%.
So-
It's true, and that would be, I mean, it's not, it's not habitable. It's not, you know, the sitter's point of view, CEO, but-
Do you believe it's, the 50% rule applies here?
Probably not.
Okay, let's move on to the next item on our agenda. We appreciate you appearing in the house, and good luck on that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on 157 La Graine Street.
Just to perfect the record, since it was scheduled for a public hearing, a motion to not order adoption of a resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And that's on 22 Smith Street. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign. Thank you, Mr. Sears. The next item on the agenda, public hearing, 157 La Graine.
Yes, sir. Again, a storm damaged property, extensive roof damage, a large hole in the roof, front porch damaged, some windows broken out, et cetera. We have had some communication with the owners. They were, again, having settlement issues with their insurance companies, but they say that they, once they settled, they were going to, they have a contract to sell the property, and the new owner was going to demolish it and rebuild. But nothing has really happened in that regard, and I haven't had a lot of communication with them in the last couple of months. So I don't know if they're here tonight to address it, but there's not a lot happening right now with this one, so.
This is a public hearing on 157 La Graine Street. Are the owners in attendance? Is there a representative of the owners in attendance? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll close the public hearing at this time and ask for a resolution, repair, demolish, 45 days.
So moved.
How old is this home?
Probably 1900.
1890, 1900.
I can, I've got it here. If you give me a minute, go through my files. 1910.
Nineteen-ten.
And it does, you did answer in the report that the fifty percent rule does apply on this one?
Yeah, in my, yes, in the building department's opinion, it does, yes.
The forty-five days gets their attention, makes them move forward.
But they said they were gonna sell and tear it down.
They can certainly come back and ask for more if they'll start moving forward. That's what we're trying to do.
Are the owners local?
They are. To, I believe they've moved to Peachtree City is my understanding, but, um, at least that's the last I heard.
Have a motion to our second. Second. Motion of second, forty-five day resolution on one fifty-seven LaGrange Street. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. The next is a public hearing on twenty-five, uh, Pinson Street.
Yes, sir. Again, in a, uh, severely damaged property, uh, very extensive damage on this one. This property, uh, the previous owner was going to tear it down. Um, he had the property tested, and then it came back with some asbestos, and so he kinda stopped everything and, um, was trying to get some additional bids to, uh, for the abatement on the asbestos. Uh, but since then, he decided to sell it, and I did have some communication with the new owner, and I told him he was gonna have a limited time to do something with it, and, um, I asked him to be here tonight. I don't know if he is. I don't think he was able to come, but, oh, you are?
I represent him, yeah.
Oh, you represent, uh, Karen?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, then, we do have a representative from that property here.
If you'll come forward and state your name, please.
I'm Ron Arnold. I represent SKA for this hearing.
Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Basically, they purchased the property, and now we just wanna, we gotta put a roof on it. We know the roof is destroyed. And we wanna put a roof on it, and we wanna restore it. We've bought other properties here which we have restored, and we work with Section Eight Housing and stuff like that. So we're, we clean the yard and all that, but we just want your permission to go ahead and rebuild this thing.
Okay, have you, uh, so you're a contractor?
Yeah, I work for them, yeah.
Okay, um.
Who, can I ask a question? Who is the owner now?
SKA Services and Property, Property Services. They're in Swanee.
That's who we have in our agenda. SKA Realty Services LLC.
The gentleman's Karen Arthur is the gentleman.
Yeah, Karen, yeah.
Okay.
He's the one I've communicated with.
Um, okay, so, yeah, that's, right, next question. How many days do you think you're gonna need to do that?
Well, first thing what I do is get a permit and pull, get the roof put on, and it's, it's probably gonna take at least probably ninety days to restore that thing, because that's what I, basically what I do. I supervise the restoration. We've had about fifteen houses in Newland that we've restored already. We just finished two up. We're getting occupied this weekend, and we're working on three more. So the first thing we do is get the roofers over there and start and get the roof on it.
Right. Well, is there anyone else who we, here who would like to speak to the issue of twenty-five Pinson Street? See, no one come forward. I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time, and you, you, you're requesting a ninety-day?
That'd be fine, sir.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion of second for a ninety-day resolution, repair or demolish. Any discuss, any discussion at all? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much. Uh, this next item is a public hearing, five Mink Hall Court, repair or demolish. I'm opening a public hearing at this time on Mink, five Mink Hall Court.
Yes, sir. Um, uh, this property, we've had no communication with the owner. Um, uh, they have not reached out, not pulled permits. Uh, it's severely damaged, and, um, and we have not been able to ascertain what the owner plans to do with it, and, uh, this just, there's no, there's no progress, nothing being, nothing being done with this one. Nothing's been done to the property since the storm. It's, the roof has completely collapsed. It's been exposed since the storm, so.
This is a public hearing. Did someone come tonight to speak to the issue of five Mink Hall Courts? Seeing no one move forward, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and ask for forty-five day repair or demolish.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion of second for a forty-five day repair or demolish on five Mink Hall Court. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes?
Um, was this owner occupied at some point, or was this tenant occupied, or did he know?
I don't know for certain, but it's a duplex. I'm, 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 it's, the owner's name is listed at that address. So I don't know if he lived in one.
Is that where we're sending the mail?
Uh, what's that?
Is that where we're sending the mail?
Yes.
So they don't live there, and we're sending the mail?
Well, most of these people that are had, are having their mail forwarded, that, that have been gone, they've been gone from, you know, since the storm, so most of those folks were having their mail forwarded. That's the only address we, we had for them.
All right. Any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carried. Thank you. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
The next item, uh, is a public hearing. This is an annexation request. Uh, this request has, they have, the, uh, applicant has asked for us to continue, uh, this, uh, public hearing until our June fourteenth, six-thirty meeting. Ms. Griffith is here. Mr. Cole, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Um, did I say that right?
You did.
Okay, good. I won't have to back up. Uh, then, what I would like to do then, because I have opened the public hearing, instead of hearing anything from Mr. Cole or the planning commission tonight, I would like to, uh, have that done at the continuation at that time, so it's all fresh, instead of hearing it tonight and then maybe having to rehash it at that time. So, uh, if there is a motion to continue this public hearing until June the fourteenth, six-thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Thank you. Uh, the next, under visitors' request for bridging the gap to use CJ Smith Park for summer lunch, June the sixth through August the fifth, uh, from eleven a.m. to two p.m., and to place yard signs at Farmer Street and Glenn Street to advertise. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, we approve the request. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, question.
We don't reserve anything in CJ Smith Park, do we?
Correct, we don't.
So they could just use it, right?
They, what they'd like to do is, um, take a few parking spaces. They, they like to use a few parking spaces instead of a distribution center.
Okay, that makes sense.
Sure.
Right. Okay, so I have a motion of second, and any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Thank you. The next is a request from First Baptist Church, close Brown Street between West Washington Street and Madison Street during Vacation Bible School, the week of June the thirteenth through the seventeenth, from eight a.m. until twelve, until twelve-thirty p.m. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion of second would grant the request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Motion carried. That ends our regular agenda. We have no reason for an executive session. Is anyone coming in tonight off agenda that, something we haven't already discussed, um, that needs to come up? I thought you were, I'm sorry, but I thought you were here with the issue of the abandonment.
I was here for, I, I, excuse my voice. I had an operation lately.
If you'll come up to the podium, please. And, you're Mr. Avery?
I'm Mr. Avery. I never got a chance to speak on my behalf.
Well, it, the issue has not been decided, so, uh, you'll need to come back when, when that survey, it'll be on our agenda in the future, when you will have an opportunity to speak, uh, but we have not. Some of the parties involved in this application for the, for the abandonment of the property need to know on the ground where the property line is, and that's what the survey is gonna do, is go out there and put stakes on the ground to, to identify the actual property lines.
May I, speaking on my behalf, may I say something?
Pardon me? May I, may I go forward and say a couple things about that? Uh, yes, sir, you can, but.
Just, just for the record, just so to help the process along, 'cause it, and again, excuse me, my voice.
Sure.
The process has been going on for a year. So it's been dragging on, and we've given the masons enough chance to respond, but they never responded to, to Mr. Smith. The property was marked. I never got a chance to say it today, but I, I spent sixty-five hundred dollars with Gaskin surveying, and the property has been marked. It's been marked for six months now. We've given, I, Mr. Sears has known and helped me through the process too. I've let everybody know. We've supplied the survey to the masons. I've marked the property. I've done everything on my behalf, and they just, they are not responding. He said tonight that they don't have any intentions of wanting the property. So they wanna know where it's at. They just need to go out in their backyard and look.
Mr. Avery, hearing what you have to say, this, this item, you can put on your calendar, will be on our agenda on, uh, June the twel, well, the fourteenth, June the fourteenth at six-thirty. If you'll come back here on June the fourteenth at six-thirty, this item will reappear on our agenda, and you'll have an opportunity at that, at that meeting also to speak on your behalf, and we'll make a decision at that time.
Okay, Mr. Sears, you were gonna speak to them if you could let them know that the survey's done for them so that they don't spend unnecessary money. I think you were gonna speak to, weren't you, weren't you gonna speak to them? I, I thought you mentioned that you were gonna be speaking to them, but.
I did.
I'd like to help them along. I don't want to see them spend unnecessary money. I've already spent the sixty-five hundred dollars with the survey.
Right. Well.
Okay, I just try to be helpful.
I can't keep them from spending money on a survey, but it'll be on our next agenda, now that you've told us that it's marked on the ground.
It's marked on the ground. Has been for six months.
Okay, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, anyone else who is here tonight? Council members have anything? Anyone?
I, I, um, you know, we, we're going through the necessary process of trying to make sure that we have people move along in the process to repair or demolish their homes. That last home, I asked the question whether or not we had, um, you know, the forwarding address for these folks. It's been over a year. I don't know how long the post office forwards. We haven't sent certified to make sure they got it, and, you know, I, I just want us to take the extra care for these, where there was no representative coming, to make sure that we send something certified or something, to make sure that we can get to these people. I would hate for someone to not be getting our mail over something as important as this.
I would think one way to try to accomplish that, if you don't mind me making a suggestion, is either through the Coweta County Tax Assessor's Office, if they have a forwarding address that they may have given them rather than us. I mean, a tax bill was sent out on this property, so have the taxes been paid? That's, that's one way to look at that and see if, if that connection was made. And then the other way is simply to look up and see if there's a lien on the property through a mortgage company. And certainly, they have given a forwarding address to them, uh, I would hope, after they left. So if you could use those two avenues to try to reach out to someone, I would appreciate that.
No doubt.
I mean, is there another way you think?
No, I just want us to make more of the better effort than we have to just try to get you.
I agree, I, I agree. I agree. Okay, council, anyone else have anything?
I just wanna say that this past week, a couple of weeks, has been, uh, you know, public service, public safety, uh, appreciation. So I appreciate all that the staff does, all the police department, the fire department, they're all different. We had a special call meeting earlier. I appreciate what y'all do. Uh, thank you for the effort you taught, in time and effort you put into, um, making our city a great place to live, um, and for all the hard work. And I know oftentimes it is longer than eight-hour days, um, that you put into it, so thank you.
Is there, thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved. Motion of second to adjourn. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.